Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Chocky.
I declare a quorum. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting dated February 10th, 2011. Is there a second?
So move.
Any questions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation, proposed city of Wooddale floodplain buyout policy. This is just a first draft. I think we want to have a very, very short discussion just to talk about what staff has put together for us. We know that other than the $10,000 that may show up in the final budget line item, there are no monies for this at this point. But I have felt for a long time it's important to begin to put this policy into play. With that, the basic outline that Mr. Forrest found and modified, I think is a good start. But I think it is missing a critical component, which would be some type of a numbered rating system so we can identify, hopefully objectively, you know, the worst and most important properties to buy out. Something along the lines of if it's uninhabitable due to flooding and has been for a certain period of time, that would rank higher. Cannot be rebuilt for the county and FEMA rules, the over 50% rule. I think that's a critical component to have in there. And then, of course, you know, some of the other things that Mr. Forrest did include, such as, you know, water on the main living floor, perhaps something specific, more than X number of feet in the basement due to being located in the floodplain and actual floodwaters in the property. So I think there's a lot that needs to be in here, but as far as the basic format and as far as us as a council getting together, realizing this is important and starting to move forward, I think we're going in the right track. Is there any questions or comments anybody else would like to make at this point? Alderman Winger?
That's really, just as you stated, was the only comment that I was going to state. That was my one concern of having more criteria in there, or almost as a priority listing or categories tiered rating of A properties, B properties, C properties. And I'm thinking the first section, Section 1, under consideration of properties, would be an appropriate place. Like, I was thinking 1A, where it spells out residential property. At the committee's discretion, non-residential structures or vacant parcels may be considered based on the tiered document or something, and then we point to our working document. Thank you.
Thank you. There's Alderman Coles.
I got one thing to say. I heard on TV at the news that all FEMA who sent out checks to people that flooded along the Displanes River are now calling, if their insurance company paid for it, they are now calling back the checks. There was a lady has the, the lady had $3,400 from FEMA, and she got a letter saying that she's got to send that back because they sent the money out by mistake. So we got to dig into that a little bit if you're going to, John. See if you can find out something about that, because I think that should be also included in this.
Yeah, Alderman Coles, I agree with you. This should be an all-inclusive policy. I think it's important that we've decided that we will consider cities' funds in this endeavor, but also somewhere in here, some kind of policing or regulating or, you know, watchdog type of a consideration for other monies by other government entities is probably critical for being in here. I have one more thing that I want to add is, before this is finalized, which I'm sure is quite a ways off, I do want to make note that it's important that this is going to be in no way interpreted by any resident as binding prior to final council decision on any one particular piece of property. I don't know if that sounds too harsh, if that's too, you know, if I'm being too premature with that at this point, but I don't want in any way, shape, or form, somebody to come in and say, "All right, you got your policy. I want my money," or "I'm suing." It's got to be really clear. It's probably going to be really long, a lot longer than this, probably a lot more verbiage than any of us really want to have, but protecting the city and the private property owners all at the same time and going forward in a clear, concise direction is critical. Is there any other comments on this, or can we move on to the next item? Mayor Johnson?
We're just kind of playing off what you said. I notice this is narrowly drafted as the DuPage buyout plan, but I think we have that pending application, application for federal funding on that $6 million grant. So I think, subject to governmental funding availability, that we need to expand it more than just DuPage County. Give us the option using tourism money, DuPage funds, or state funds, or federal funds. That this ranking we do of houses would apply to whatever source of funds we get.
Very good point. I would be very much in favor of pooling whatever monies are appropriate, as the council deems appropriate, into, you know, into a single fund. Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
So what I'm hearing here is we still got a long ways to go with this policy. So I guess, I guess what we're looking for is give John some directions, and then we're going to table this tonight and not pass this tonight. Is that what the committees, I mean, is that what you're looking for, John, or?
As the chairman, it was my, it was my intention just to get, you know, direction to staff. So we may not even need to table it. If nobody else has any comments, we can just move on to the next subject.
Okay, so did you want, does he got all those directions that we raised here tonight, John? I mean, I just want to make sure.
If he doesn't, he can watch the tape later, because I know he's going to want to anyway. All right. All right. Anything else on this subject? If not, I will move on to the next item, which is a report and recommendation on a letter of credit reduction for the Arbor Woods subdivision. Is this going to be John or Jeff want to take this?
I can address that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Yeah, this is a simple request for a reduction of the letter of credit for Arbor Woods subdivision from FPG Corporation. Staff has reviewed the as-built engineering plans. They've reviewed the previous notes of the former city engineer, Mr. Graff, and in addition have made some additional site inspections. So this is basically, I think, in your package, you got a copy of the letter from FPG requesting the letter of reduction, then also a letter of recommendation to approve the reduction, and then a schedule that set the recommended amount we should lower it to from Baxter Woodman. So it is staff's recommendation to reduce their existing letter of credit from $927,763 to $79,981. And be reminded, this is not the establishment of the two-year maintenance program that's required. This is just a lowering of the existing letter of credit.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Alderman, please.
John, is the final lift done on the street, or?
No.
And we have, we can cover with that, that amount?
I believe so. I think we're leaving $35,812 for putting the final lift on the street.
Okay, and you guys are fine with that number? Okay. Mr. Stefan seems to be, it just seemed low to me. I don't know, maybe, but, okay.
Actually, I was going to ask the same question. I think that, to me, it seems the 35 grand is enough for the final lift, but what about any damage to the layer underneath from having been exposed all this time? Mr. Stefan?
We take that, well, we take that into account as we figure out the percentages, as well as you also have a contingency factor that's also included in the, in the bottom line. So there's a 15% contingency factor that's also added to it for any additional things that maybe we can't see at this point.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
Question, on the bottom of this sheet, the streetlight system has been completed. However, connection is on a meter right now, on, at the pump station. Does that, does that mean they have to put in? Is that the, because you said streetlights is 100%. So they still owe $10,000? Are you holding back $10,000? You said percentage completed, 100%. What in the last bottom of page, it says the city requires separate electrical meter for the?
Yes. If you look at the spreadsheet on our letter dated March 16th by Mr. Blackie, you'll see streetlights and the value of the remaining work, and there's $10,000 included in that line, for that line item. So that totals out to the $79,981.
May I do one other question?
Yes, absolutely.
Could you, could you just freshen my memory on this subdivision? Where this one may be located?
Yeah, this is the subdivision that is on the south side of Potter and west of Spruce, over in the area near where Concord built.
Where they built those townhouses right across the street?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And let me just add, with the streetlights, the streetlights are 100% completed, and for some reason, the developers, electrical contractor tied those into the electric meter at the lift station, whereas the plans, I believe he's being required to install a separate electric meter just for the streetlights, and that's what we're retaining this $10,000 for.
Can I back up to that? Let me make sure. They are tied into the lift station. Do we own the lift station?
I don't believe we own the lift station yet, no.
So it's their lift station?
We haven't officially taken over the lift station. We do maintain it. We do check it on a monthly basis. It is on utilities round sheet to go and look at. It has not officially been turned over to the city yet, though, no.
Well, let me ask you this question. That raises a concern with me. Are we paying the electric bill for that lift station right now? So they are?
Correct.
Till they turn that over?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Coles?
Question. There was supposed to be sidewalks put in there along the, by the streetlights. And I know that ain't in yet. Is that all figured in here? If I remember right, there was supposed to be sidewalks along the Potter over to, well, it used to be Roosevelt Road, but it used to go around the corner. It used to be called Roosevelt Road. I don't know. I think they named it an Arbor Woods Road now. And do they have the sidewalks hooked up to the other sidewalks by the houses, or what? I haven't been over there for a little while, because I ain't been around.
It's, I seem to remember, I mean, the sidewalks as existing, I thought were as, I remember the plans from years ago, but I would hope maybe staff has a, has a more recent snapshot in their minds of those plans.
It was supposed to be on one side.
Yeah, I thought I remembered the one side.
The, the, the south side of, south side of Potter, where the streetlights are.
I apologize, Alderman. I don't, off the top of my head, know if he's put in all the sidewalks. Typically, he puts it, they would put them in piece by piece as they're building.
They were putting them, while they build the houses, they were putting them in piece by piece, but.
Correct. I can check on that tomorrow. I'll have that information for you.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Coles, if that's the situation, I mean, and as most builders typically do, they put the sidewalks in as they build the houses, are you, are you comfortable moving forward as long as, as long as Mr. Forrest has had an opportunity?
Well, for $79,000, I wasn't going to put in, isn't going to put in all sidewalks and blacktop, the streets.
I hear where you're going, and I'm a little concerned about these numbers, too. I almost want to table this to the next committee until we've got a, we've got a more concise report.
Well, we could, we could give him some, keep out about $300,000.
I don't know how to arbitrarily pick a number. I either feel we should, I either think we should agree with staff or disagree with staff at this point. John, comment?
Well, as I say, I can have that information for you. You know, I'll have somebody check it tomorrow. I'll be out of the office tomorrow at a meeting, but, you know, being that this is committee, if you want to move forward with it, I'll be sure that you have the information well prior to the council meeting.
Well, what?
Yeah.
How about if we table this to council and have them bring it right to council after you get the figures again? Or we don't have to go back to committee?
So it wouldn't really be a table. We make a recommendation and I pending receiving the proper information by the time of the council meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Then if there are no other questions or comments, I will go ahead and make that motion to reduce the LOC to, what was the number, $79,981, pending the findings of all the questions brought up this evening? And this goes right to council, then? This is not going back to committee? That's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings, these are all scheduled for April. First is amendments to the local building code. Second is the brick ordinance. We're going to revisit that. And third, Streetscape Committee, the community sign project, which I know as the chairman, I don't want to discuss until after we're past, past budget. Is there anything, anybody else would like added? Alderman, Roy Wesley?
Mr. Chairman, it just keeps on getting off the list here. Are we going to talk about lack coverage?
Yeah, that's correct. Staff?
It keeps disappearing.
Let's, how about first committee meeting after budget's over? We can, we can spend some proper time on it. Can we get a commitment from staff to do that?
Certainly.
I didn't miss nothing, did I?
No, you didn't miss it. Yeah, actually, when you were on vacation, we discussed it.
Okay.
You should be watching the meetings, Roy. I'm just kidding. All right, John, so is that fine? And Alderman Wesley, would you be able to have a, any input offline for Mr. Forrest so he is very clear about the concerns that you have had for some time now?
I will discuss that with John within the next two weeks.
Fabulous. Thank you. Anything else? No? With that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm going to suggest that Public Works goes next instead of Finance.
Okay. I need, let the minute taker note the same people present. I need a motion to approve the minutes for February 24th, 2011. Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Questions, changes, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A report and recommendation, contract awards for North Wastewater Treatment Plant, systems of energy efficiency improvement to Baxter Wood, not to exceed $35,005. That is my motion. Questions?
Thank you. Just a brief question, Mr. Kramer. I know we're going to redo the treatment plant, $20 million, and I know this project will save about, the payback is about seven years, but is there any relationship between doing this project and redoing the treatment plant?
The blowers that we're proposing would be removed from the existing plant and utilized in the new treatment plant design. I don't think there'll be any change of that, even if there is modifications to the treatment plant design between now and when they're built. It's a frictionless style blower, more efficient. That's basically the reason why we're going to it. We had looked at this, Baxter and Woodman had done a study on the efficiency of both treatment plants and the blower facilities for us back, I would like to say, six months ago. They came back with their findings, and then Brad and I had discussed with them possibly looking at upgrading both facilities. We're coming to you with the north plant facility first. That's the one that'll show, basically, we can improve by about 56% of our efficiency, and we can transfer those blowers back over to the new plant when we do make that. We'll probably have to add some additional blowers, it looks like, in the new design, but the current ones that we'll be replacing will still be utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lucio?
John, right at the beginning, you said you don't know if they would have to be changed. Are you saying, and then at the end, you said, "No, they're going to be utilized." So I just want to make sure that they're going to be used, right?
They will definitely be used. Whether or not the blower facility is going to be changed in the treatment plant design, that was what I was alluding to. That facility may or may not be upgraded or changed. I know they've been talking about some floodproofing for that area. If that floor is moved, we'll need to move those blowers temporarily and then reinstall them. I'm assuming there's going to be some new piping going into effect. So like I said, they're going to need to be moved, but they will still be utilized again, but we'll probably have to go up in the number of blowers we use.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Items to be considered for future meetings, CY drainage solution replacement, silver maple trees, and parkway, illegal sanitation, sewer connection, Georgetown requests, streetlight at Hoover and George, tall oaks. Any other items? I will be adding one item to this agenda on how Public Works could knowify on street conditions, that we need to go back and look at their policy and maybe tweak their policy a little bit. So I will be looking at that policy and bring that to council to revisit that policy, how Public Works could knowify on issues like that. Any other items? Alderman Roy Wesley?
In the memo for the blizzard update, John, we have a memo that says 75% of all outdoor board expenses. What, what was the dollar amount of that blizzard that cost us? And what are we expecting to get back on that?
I'm being told a little over $60,000 is what we put in for.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? I'll take a motion to adjourn the Public Works Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Will the minute taker please reflect? All members are present. I do declare a quorum, and I'm going to make a motion to approve minutes dated March 17, 2011. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question. Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
Ma'am Chairman, I will be asking that these minutes be approved at a council meeting due to the fact that they were just handed us to, tonight, that I'd just like to have a little time to read them. They were just laid on a diase tonight.
So.
So I would be voting no for these minutes at this time, if that's the case.
I think that might be more appropriate than to, to put it to council. I'm getting an ad from the mayor, correct? Yep?
Procedurally, the council cannot approve committee minutes. You could do it at the next committee meeting if you want, but not at a council meeting. Or you can proceed tonight and vote no. Yes.
Then I'll, then I'll ask ma'am chairman to postpone this to the next committee meeting to approve these minutes due to the fact that they were just handed to us today on diase that is almost nine pages, that there was a lot of conversation that went on in the budget process. So I will be asking for that, to, you asked to take that next committee meeting to approve these minutes.
Okay, I'd be happy to move it to the next committee meeting. And Ms. Malone, will you be able to make, make a note as well that it should be in the next agenda for the next committee meeting? Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Someone tell me, why are we getting this last minute?
I'm thinking it's because of the length of it and the time of going through and recording it, and a person who, who does the minutes is also a full-time employee, so.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
It was just last week that we did this.
That's true. Okay.
Thank you. That's okay. Anything else on the question? Okay, then I'm going to move those minutes to the next council meeting. And now, at this point.
Committee meeting.
Committee meeting, that's what I meant to say. Thank you.
Any emotion there, or no?
And with that, Mr. Wilson would like to take us through a few house cleaning items before we started on the budget we last left off at motor fuel tax and finish that. So, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before we get into a couple of updates from last week, I'm going to go slightly off the board on one thing here. The separate mailer for the grade separation is actually printing probably as we speak and should be sent out early next week, I'm being told. So look for that in everybody's mailbox early next week. The NYMEC one will be in the water bill. Also, last week, unfortunately, Mr. Fischot did not get a chance to talk, so we've dubbed his ante this week on funds that he's going to talk about, but I won't tell you which ones. So if you ask a question, we'll, we'll have to see. So with that, I just wanted to catch up on a couple of things from last week. Alderman R. Wesley had asked about the property tax levy. I went to the county on Tuesday to collect that. It was approximately $8,000 higher than I had budgeted for, so that's a good thing. It's only a good thing. The EAV, as he alluded to, was down close to 10%. So, he said the, the number was a little.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Could you, could you tell what EAV is? I mean, that's.
The equalized assessed valuation of all the property in town. So effectively, it's how much the town, the buildings in the town are worth, I guess, if you will.
Okay. We need to know that. So everyone else knows what that means.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry about the.
King, King, who's our justice on our houses, said all the houses in DuPage County are going to raise, that they're going to go down any 10%.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, on his website, he said your property tax bill will be going up despite the fact that your valuation was going down.
It's going down, yes.
Correct. Yeah, but he did say, I think it's between 3.6 and 3.84% increase in the tax bill despite the reduction of your valuation. So it's an interesting conundrum, but that, that's the way it panned out. So all in all, I mean, a higher tax bill, a higher tax levy than we had anticipated is, is good news for the general fund. Just wanted to pass that along. There was a question on the Harris Bank, the $5,000 contribution that they make. Man, I'll paraphrase. Effectively, as long as there is a non-sales tax producing business on that parcel, we get the $5,000. So it's in perpetuity. If there is a sales tax generating business there, anything less than 5,000, they're to send to us anything over 5,000, the deal's off. So as long as it's a bank, we're going to get $5,000 a year for it not being a sales tax generating property. Those actually in the ordinance that was passed establishing the bank on that particular property.
Are you looking to ask a question? Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
What account do you put that $5,000 in then?
Goes into the general fund. I could tell you the account of it, but it goes into the general fund, though.
Could we use that for anything else but general account?
The ordinance is self.
Can we put to a, let's put this way, can we put it to a program that we might want to adopt up here on the council? Than put it in the general fund? Will that hurt the general fund if we take $5,000 and earmark it to a project?
At this point, I wouldn't particularly see why it would. When it first came in, it wasn't going in the general fund. It was going in one of the other special funds. Forget if it was the economic development or the land acquisition fund, and when those got closed, it moved into the general fund. So there doesn't appear to be a specific earmark for it in the ordinance that was, that it was passed, so.
Because the reason why I bring this up, I'll be totally honest with you why I'm bringing this up, ma'am chair. We, we already moved $10,000 for land acquisition fund, okay? For buyout properties. We are now in the process of revisiting the ordinance to buyout properties if it gets down to that, that fee, or they meet our criteria and that. Why could we not take that $5,000 that we get from the bank and put it into land acquisition fund and build that thing up? Because if we're passing a policy in the next, or a policy, and we're going to do that policy, we should start funding their project somehow. Because if not, then why even waste the time to move forward with a policy that might not ever get funded in the city council? So I would ask that that $5,000 that we get from that bank, if we only adopt that policy for the buyout parcels down the line, that we establish that account again and put those $5,000 in that account and keep building that up every year and see where it goes. We could always move that, close that account out again down the line, but until then, I think that $5,000, since we look, talking about this part, policy, that should go in there and not put in the general fund. So, I mean, that's, that's only my comment. Council's got to make that decision, but if that's, I mean, that's my suggestion with it, $5,000.
Alderman Cudala, were you wishing to be recognized?
I wanted to say that, yeah, well, I wanted to be recognized before that, but what I wanted to say probably isn't as good as what Alderman Wesley just said. I was just going to, you know, make the suggestion that because this money is coming in, in lieu of sales tax, that it should go to the same place her sales tax typically goes to. However, I like his idea better. So he's right.
to. However, I like his idea better. So, he's right. We may be creating a, we may be creating a, a line item without any means of funding it. So, like I said, it's, that's a better idea, so.
Please continue. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Brad, the only thing on that parcel is the bank. There's, there's no room for anything else to be built on that. I don't know how big that parcel is.
Unless I'm gravely mistaken, no, there's no room for anything else on that parcel.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that doesn't jeopardize us for anything else being built there.
Say to Alderman E. Wesley's point, if that's where you guys want to go with that, I mean, let us know tonight, and we can certainly make that change before the, before it gets approved, or we can discuss it and do it during the year. I mean, that's a, a call for you sitting up there, so.
Just a question. As, with the changes made to date, where do we stand with general fund? Are we still in the black? And if so, how much?
Correct. Last week, the only thing that was changed last week was the tuition reimbursement money was moved to transfer to the land acquisition fund for initial seed money for the potential property buyout program. So, it was actually a net zero to the general fund, so still twelve thousand and change to the good. Assuming that we roll the higher-than-anticipated property tax levy in there, you'd be around twenty thousand to the good. And then if you back out the five thousand, around fifteen. So, still, yeah, no, no detriment.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm not against the buyouts in any which way, but I think we should just hold this off and wait until we're done with the budget and come back and just move the things around as that sees fit. That's my suggestion.
Okay. I know Mr. Wilson did ask for, you know, if we were going to make a change, let him know. And if anyone wants to speak, I'm willing to call on them. Mr. Wilson?
Per the, the ordinance, and historically, we get that money in January, so it's not coming in for, what, nine months, so.
Okay.
Do have a little bit of time, I guess, so.
Okay, I'm hearing no other comments.
Well, did I?
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Is, is that what we're going to wait now to, to, after the budget's almost done, to make that, that change? Because I'll tell you one thing, I'm ready to take, it's still going to put, the way the budget's laid out right now, it's still putting us in the black, in the good. And I'm ready to make that move right now, take that five thousand dollars and put it back into that land acquisition fund. I mean, but if you guys want to wait to the end, that's fine. I mean, I don't care, but that will be a question I will be asking at the end. It goes that way, especially if we still stay in the black as good as we are.
Well, if that's your motion, then say it's your motion.
Right, that's my motion.
And, and then it's going forward, not going, not recovering any other monies. It's going forward, so next January type of thing, right?
Right.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? Anything on the question? Roy Wesley?
I just, before we take the vote, I just want to be in question here and where we're standing later on and, and the unions and, and salaries and everything else, and make sure we do stay in the black on this, so.
Mr. Wilson?
Unless someone raises an issue, the general fund was completed last week, so unless you want to go back to it for some reason, it's, it's effectively done at this point. So, unless there's some conversation back to it, there would be no reason for it to change tonight otherwise.
Well, I'm not clear that, I, I believe you asked for a direction now if we were going to make that change. So, does that mean you're not going to?
No, correct, but Alderman Wesley said he just wanted to make sure that after tonight, the general fund was still in the black. We got through all the departments and the general fund last week. So, unless somebody has a specific question about last week, you're not going to even touch the general fund tonight, save this one motion in theory, so. So, you should be fine.
You mean, touch it by putting it in the red?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
All I did is just brought that up as a general thing. I mean, the entire budget, not the gen, just, not the general fund, the wastewater and everything else. I just want to make sure everything is in sync.
Okay. Okay, I think we're safe to go on to business license. When, when you're ready? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, there's a motion and a second, and I called the question. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just the business license, the question came up, how much the business license for a particular business in town was last week? The answer to that question is eight hundred dollars was the answer for that business.
Based on the knowledge?
Correct. For the former Michael Lewis property, the question was asked specifically what their business license fee was. It was eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Wilson, Michael Lewis property, which, which one is that?
The Michael Lewis company that was on, I don't know if it was on Michael.
Okay.
It's a company.
Okay.
Middle, excuse me, I'm middle. Sorry, I'm middle. That question came up, so, eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, not to open up any wounds from last week, but I'm remiss. I, I did misspeak briefly during the tuition reimbursement portion. I said a D got fifty percent, a D or an F gets zero percent, a hundred percent for A or B, seventy-five for C, D or F. You're completely out of luck. So, I did say that on camera. I just wanted to clarify that before, just to, to make sure everybody was, that we were covered on that, so. And that's all I got from last week, so.
Okay, great. Then, thank you for the catch-up on those. And then, last time we met, we finished motor fuel tax according to my notes. And the game plan is to skip over anything water and sewer related, and then we'll take a break, and then we'll circle back and do water and sewer related budgeting. So, with that being said, my next item that I see, Mr. Wilson, do you agree it's the maintenance division?
Tourism.
Or tourism?
Tourism.
Tourism.
Tourism fund. Tourism fund.
Right, okay. I make a motion to approve the tourism fund as presented. Is there a second? I'm going to call the question. I'm just looking for a motion in a second.
Second.
Thank you. Anything on the question? Alderman Police?
Yeah, I know we moved, I think, two years ago, we moved the ornamental lighting. It's like three hundred and thirty thousand in the capital projects. With this economic times, can't we just bring it back to the tourism fund? I know we, what do we do? We move, there's an inter-fund transfer to the capital projects, right?
Mr. Wilson?
That's right. The, that particular transfer was for the retaining wall area on the northeast corner of Wooddale and Irving Park. Now, there's that, that little retaining wall with flowers and bushes and stuff in there. That sixty-eight thousand was for that. The decorative streetlights are in the CIP. It's your CIP that you guys approved back in, back in January. They were in there, the decorative streetlights.
Personally, I'd like to move them back to the tourism fund and let them come out of here.
No, those monies are actually being paid out of the other fund, correct, versus all of it coming from here?
Right.
Correct. And the, the theory behind that was to, I guess I'll paraphrase here, was to just get the project done, because the fifty thousand dollars a year that we had previously been budgeting out of the tourism fund got two or three lights. And so, we're looking to do a significantly bigger chunk out of the capital projects fund to finish the south end one year and finish it going north the next year. And even to that end, I mean, the capital projects fund, even in its worst year, I still think has over about eight hundred thousand dollars in a cash balance in it, and that's at the end of 2014, which is the year their oil oaks is up. So, there's no real financial reason to move it from the capital projects fund into tourism.
So, what I'm hearing is that, that the three hundred thousand or so, or whatever is in there now, that, that's actually from that fund, so we wouldn't want to bring it into the tourism fund? We would address it at that time in that fund. So, so those monies, only some of them came from the tourism, and that got spent, the fifty thousand at a time, right?
The fifty thousand had been accumulating for a couple of years and was spent back in fiscal two thousand and ten to do as far, far south as it got. Last year's CIP, we wanted to put them into the CIP to finish the project off, and it got pulled. And fifty thousand got put back in the tourism fund. Like I said, that gets about two lights, I think.
Right.
This year in the CIP, we put it back in the CIP to, again, try and finish off the south leg of it. Three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in there to finish the south leg, which at fifty thousand dollars a year would take seven years to finish if you'd put it back in the tourism fund. So, we're just trying to, as has been said many times, just finish the project. So, that, that was the staff's intent of putting it back in the CIP this year.
Alderman Police?
Yeah, I thought a couple of years ago was eighty-five thousand, we got twelve. It was, it was quite a few that were put in. I thought it was twelve lights for eighty-five thousand. We had a hundred thousand, and I thought we were told, well, we figured twelve, and that's what the price came out, and it came out under the hundred thousand we had budgeted.
Or to one of the gentlemen behind me, perhaps, if they have a better memory than I do. Because I, I had always recollected that fifty thousand wouldn't get you a whole lot, but. Other, just another point, too. Just from a funding standpoint, you know, the tourism fund right now has a projected ending surplus in the fund balance of just, of four thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. If we move it back in there and put another fifty thousand, and then it would have a negative, you know, forty-four thousand dollar surplus. And like I said, the, the capital projects fund has the, the funding available to complete that, so. I guess it's just a question of, do you really want to do the decorative streetlights, and how long do you want to take it, I guess?
Alderman Caddala?
First, I seem to remember numbers similar to what Alderman Police is stating. Second, well, I understand where Alderman Police is going with the economic situation right now. This is a project that's been out there a long time, and there is, there is economy of scale, and we have made some investment in both staff and, and engineering dollars. So, I mean, I would, it, it's a tough call to move forward with anything that's not necessary right now. But this is one of those things that I would, I would put myself out on a limb to say it's, it's worth trying to finish up.
Mr. Wilson, can you refresh my memory on the first line item on expenditure salaries? Why are we seeing a, a doubling cost?
The doubling in cost, last year, we had point three three full-time equivalents worth of salary coming out of there, which was a quarter of one employee and point oh eight of another employee. This year, the point oh eight was relocated back fully to its department, and there's a quarter of another employee coming out of there. So, effectively, we increased the, the FTEs going to that by point one seven people. And admittedly, it's, the new, so it's a quarter of two employees now, instead of a quarter of one and less than ten percent of another.
So, a quarter of two employees. And I can see how that would be justified, just given the time they spent on certain times of the year in this project. Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Are we still on the streetlights, or I got something else to bring up?
It's my sense we're off the street.